And in emailing back and forth to make sure everyone understood the process. So of the 60 eligible properties for this vote process, two did use the new proxy form system that we've implemented for this first vote ever, and we had 56 packages returned. After the close of voting, actually, two additional packages came in through the mail, which we didn't open, and we were aware of one owner that did not get their package. So really, if you look at it, it's 59 of 60 property owners attempted to vote in this process, which is phenomenal. And then on the question of the ballot, the most important part for tonight, are you in favor of the City of Waterloo instituting the special service area levy? We had 51 of the respondents cast their ballot in support, four against, and the one ballot was declined because they returned it without the voter declaration card inside the package. So next steps, the policy requires that if there's support from at least 66% of ballots cast, which there was, that we bring forward the staff report to council for consideration to enter into the necessary lease and license agreements. With council's approval, if you approve that this evening, then we will work to finalize those agreements with the Homes Association and bring forward the bylaw in the fall to establish their levy to begin in 2019, which is the year that their covenants expire. And that's all for me.
Thank you very much. We do have one delegation from the Homes Association, one group, to speak. Is there any questions of Julie immediately? Seeing none, I'll call up the group, Stephen Groves, Kathleen Wheeler, and Doug Montgomery. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I guess I'm here to answer any questions, if there isn't.
Wonderful. May be concerned or good? I think we know pretty much. Thanks for making yourself available. If you want to say anything, I think certainly the results were certainly very indicative of which way the community leans.
Well, thank you for mentioning that, because, I mean, on behalf of the association, about all I have to say is we're very pleased with your worship, the council members and staff, that this is an alternative that is now provided to situations like ours. If it wasn't for this, the other alternatives would be pretty drastic or costly, so we really thank you for that. The second thing is, it's been, I'm waiting for something to come out of the woodwork, it's been a reasonably smooth process so far, and so, which isn't usually like that when you're implementing something, especially for the first time. But thanks to everybody here who represented the city and helped us, especially Julie, and we look forward to our relationship into the future.
Well, thank you very much to the dedication of the team. I think we heard that from Julie as well. Thank you very much. I'll might look to Counselor Henry for guidance on this. Counselor Henry, moving it?
Yes.
Secondary, Counselor Durrell seconds it?
And I'll just briefly concur with the statements of my friend and my friends from Guazoo too. I want to commend the executive for what clearly was a lengthy investigative thorough process that all of you undertook to fully evaluate all of the options at your disposal and for your patience as we worked out a more efficient and effective policy going forward for how to manage these in the future. I know otherwise we might have gotten to you a little bit sooner. I know you were chomping at the bit once we got through the investigative phase, but I appreciate your patience and your kind words for staff on all this. And clearly, the neighborhood is well behind the leadership that all of you have been providing, and we look forward to the relationship that we'll all continue to have going forward in the years to come. So thank you for your work, and clearly, that work has been well supported by all of your neighbors, and I can think of no higher praise.
Seeing no further questions or comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's all of us. Thank you. Thank you, Julie, Steve, Paul, for all the support on this and getting this process through the first time. Next up, Audit Committee Terms of Reference, prepared by Steve and Julie. Welcome, Julie.
It's okay. I'm just fighting you for the mess. Thank you. So we're here to provide an update on the Audit Committee Terms of Reference. So as you know, in 2016, we undertook a thorough review of all committees of council. We reported preliminary results for Audit Committee. It has a four-year term versus the other committees that had a two-year term. So we held off on the final and more thorough review until this year, which is the expiry term for this committee. Throughout our review process, we looked at the history of the Audit Committee, what other local government organizations are doing, industry best practices. We sought advice from legal counsel and from the city's external auditor. And then we also attended the Audit Committee meeting and spoke with members at the meeting and those that were not able to be present. We spoke with them after the meeting as well. Just a little bit of history. So the Audit Committee was formed in March of 2003, and it was a result of a task force that had been formed at the city to largely look at our purchasing practices. It is more commonly said that it was a recommendation of the Sills Inquiry, and it was not. We did present some findings at the inquiry, and we did present some initiatives that the city was undertaking, and the Audit Committee was one of them. But Sills did not comment on the Audit Committee in his summary or his recommendations or his findings. What he did recommend is that you have two senior staff or your engaged external counsel when necessary to review significant projects or financing arrangements. But nevertheless, it was created at that point in time, almost 15 years ago, to address program deficiencies at that time that were perceived in the city's procurement program. As I mentioned, we looked at area municipalities, and we looked at municipalities in Ontario to see, and that's our normal standard practice, that we look for best practices, and we couldn't find another municipality that has an all-citizen-based Audit Committee. But we did find a number where they had members of council that comprise an Audit Committee, and some municipalities may have one or two citizens that would also sit on that committee, but we were the only citizens-based Audit Committee that we found. So we turned our attention then to the industry best practices. So what do the boards say an Audit Committee should be? What do the Chartered Accountants of Canada say an Audit Committee focus should be? And it really focused on the external audit, financial reporting, your financial governance or financial policies program, and then codes of conduct, so ensuring that you have codes of conduct around receiving gifts or whistleblower programs, things such as that Audit Committees tend to look at in both the public and the private sector. One of the things these bodies really did stress that we found in our research is that an Audit Committee should be separate and distinct from the management and operations of an organization and somewhat elevated, and to have more of a direct reporting relationship. So with that, and with our research, what staff are recommending is that we do have a more clear separation of the Audit Committee from staff and operations. So we will not have staff members sitting on the committee any longer, is what we would recommend in a voting or non-voting capacity. We are recommending that they turn their focus to the external audit and to those best practices, so external audit, financial governance program, other significant projects that council as a body may wish to direct to the Audit Committee. The codes of conduct, so the Audit Committee has reviewed the staff code of ethics in the past in the whistleblower program, but we think it would be appropriate that committee also review things such as changes to council's code of conduct or advisory committees. And we're suggesting that the terms of reference would come into effect immediately. However, the current members would stay on the committee until their term expires this November. But the staff support to this committee, recognizing the importance of the shift of dividing it from the management operations, we are recommending that the staff support change immediately as well. And so the technical support person would be the Director of Accounting and Revenue, which is Mr. Hatenga, as there will be a clear relationship with the audit process. And the administrative support person will continue to be the Finance Executive Assistant at this time. And that's all, and we're, all three of us are available for questions.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for staff at this time? Seeing Counselor Maven. I see Counselor Maven.
Thank you. Just in the terms of reference, Julie, if I may, and perhaps Paul, but I see that the audit findings are still included in what's being referred to the Audit Committee. These are still public meetings, are they not?
Through you, oh, that was you. Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Maven. Yes, you're correct, they are public meetings. The Audit Findings is a fairly high-level document that does not have any confidential information in it, so we feel that that's an appropriate thing to remain on the group's terms of reference.
Would that be the normal practice for a findings letter?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Maven. Yeah, my experience has been that the typical Board of Directors or council or Audit Committee that's made up of council that I've attended in my previous career as an auditor, that the audit planning would go to that board or Audit Committee and also the audit findings letter as well.
If I just may, one of the problems that I sort of caused myself, if you will, was the bad use of an adjective, financial. And I had put down in the original terms of reference, financial control and policies, and it was a dangling adjective that got attached to whatever financial policies, financial control became financial policies as well. And there was a lot of scope creep took place with the Audit Committee, including appointing the auditors, including doing the audit planning, including doing the audit review. So all that became scope creep because of one little adjective that got taken out of context. So I see that it says here that financial control and related policies. Are we being clear enough on that? That we're only talking about financial control?
Through the Chair to Counselor Maven, the administrations of corporate policies policy defines corporate control policies, and so it would be referencing those that fall within that definition. So for example, the reserves and reserve policy that recently came to council, that's something in the future we would suggest would go to the Audit Committee. So it would be, and so if the wording is problematic, we're happy to receive suggestions, but it would be speaking to those policies defined within the administration of corporate policies document as financial control.
And just to show you an example of how, again, how words sort of float around, review proposed changes to staff, to the staff. Take that by itself. If a new Audit Committee comes in and takes a look at it and says, review proposed changes to staff, forget about the rest of it, stop it right there. And that's the type of thinking sometimes that happened on Audit Committee. So any staff changes, that was not the intent of it, obviously. It's code of conduct, right?
Through the Chair to Counselor Maven, yes, it's the Staff Committee and Council Codes of Conduct.
Right.
So if it helps to put Code of Conduct in front.
First, yes.
Yes, that's, would sell that.
Okay. And in my remarks later on, you'll hear me recommending something along those lines.
Further questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I might look to Counselor Henry, who sits on this committee with me, to move it, seconded by Counselor Freeman. Any further commentary? Counselor Maven, please.
Counselor Wheeler, I read your comment about Audit Committee and whether it served its purpose or not, and I thought that was a very valid point. In fact, I agreed with you. And it was meant to be a review of the purchasing procurement process, which was somewhat flawed and failed during the Wim Park episode, so to speak. But what came on, they wanted to do something more. The new, the, 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 the scope is possible on the Audit, the, 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 the task, that's one thing. But a lot of the, 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 conveniently, very enthusiastically, but on Audit Committee, definitely had to congratulate. They gave a lot of their time and efforts, and they were good, but they all had a lot of energy that they wanted to use. So therefore, I agree with you. I don't know whether Audit Committee serves a function beyond what it originally was planned for. Procurement is, 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 not sure they were always the best things. You know, the Chair of Audit came and spoke to council's policy on budget. That's not under the terms of reference, but it's always one of Audit Committee's favorite targets, was getting involved in the budget. Give you an example of the creep that became, first of all, the audit, appointment of the auditor wasn't originally an Audit Committee result, task. It was something that they took upon, they got involved in the appointment of the auditor, then they became part of the audit planning process, then they became part of the audit review process, including the findings letter. One other point, when Audit Committee was formed, one of the questions council was dealing with at the time was, should councillors be on it at all? And the compromise ended up being, yes, two councillors would be on it, the mayor and the Chair of Finance. Then the question became, will they be voting members? And no, they won't be voting members. But you don't have to have a vote when, and doesn't, and this is, I've only been to one Audit Meeting with Counselor Henry, so I have no idea, but I do know the Chairs of Finance that I was involved with, when they spoke, the Audit Committee members saw it as.
Call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, one. Thank you, and thank you for, Counselor Maven? Yeah. Yeah. Thank you very much, team, for putting this together. It's been a long time in getting this honed down to the right way of doing things to make sure we take best advantage of those enthusiastic committee members. Thank you. Next up, I can see it's the extension of the Colonial Acres Lexington interim control bylaw, report prepared by Adam. I see Joel approaching the table for any questions. There's no present.
Pushing this forward, so the same sentiments exist in that neighborhood. I'm just, through you, Mayor. Just trying to get some context.
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Durrell. I think it all has to do, and I'll let Mr. Cotter fill in if I miss it, but it all has to do with the fact that the reason why the interim control bylaw was put in place was so that we could complete our work through the comprehensive bylaw review, and that work's not complete yet. And once that's done, then it will align with getting the zoning the way that is intended for this area.
Any further commentary, Mr. Cotter?
That's an accurate assessment.
Thank you. Further?
Just to follow up to that, then, I haven't seen, so did we get a lot of public participation in that area when you were writing the zoning bylaw? I know we did in Uptown, but I'm not familiar with what's happened in that area. So we've heard a lot from the neighbors in that area around this area, the area area.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Durrell. Yes, we've heard a significant amount of comment regarding planning matters within the Colonial Acres area and the Lexington area through the comprehensive zoning bylaw. Generally, the comments are, 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 are. Go ahead.
I just wanted to also update council, since it relates to this item, that the citizens in the ward have been really busy working with our heritage planner at considering Colonial Acres as a landscape heritage district, which we don't have in this city yet because that's a new addition to the Heritage Act in Ontario. So it's been really fascinating. The citizens have come together and done a tremendous amount of research at the Waterloo Public Library, the archives are, so I look forward to seeing more information on that.
Wonderful, thank you. And with that, we move on to Item 11, the informal public meeting. This is an informal public meeting to consider Item 11A with regards to official plan amendment number 18 and zoning bylaw amendment Z1721, Bell Communities Partnership Limited, 635 Herb Street West and 12 West Hill Drive. There will be no decisions made tonight. Council and the public are seeing this application for the first time. Council is looking for feedback from interested parties with respect to this application. Tonight's comments will be taken into consideration in developing a staff position on this application, and a staff report will be considered by council during a formal public meeting at a future meeting. All property owners within 120 meters of the subject lands and anyone who signs the registry will receive notice of the formal public meeting. Anybody who wants further notice of this application, including the formal public meeting and passage of any bylaw, should sign the registry, which is located at the rear of council chambers. The planner will now provide a brief overview of the application. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mayor Jaworski, councilors and members of the public. As we started, just wanted to note that newspaper, mail, and internet notices were provided, but due to supplier delays, onsite metal signage for this application was not available prior to this informal meeting. The subject property is located on the south side of Herb Street West, near the roundabout intersection of Iron Needles Boulevard, to the north are townhouse developments, east are single detached dwellings, west is the West Hill Retirement Residence with four and 11-story buildings, the commercial plazas, including Canadian Tire, Duchy's, Fresh Market. The land to the south is designated for low-density development and zone for single detached dwellings. West Haven Street will connect through that property as part of the future subdivision development. Bit of a description of the area around the subject property. The official plan currently designates 635 Herb Street West as mixed-use, medium-high-density residential on Schedule A, minor corridor on Schedule B, and medium-high-density on Schedule B1, which permits a maximum height of 40 meters and a density of 150 to 600 bedrooms per hectare. 12 West Hill Drive is designated low-density residential with a height limit of 10 meters and a maximum density of 150 bedrooms per hectare. The official plan amendment that is requested is to reflect the official plan designations that apply to 635 Herb Street West onto 12 West Hill Drive. This will effectively increase the height permitted up to 40 meters, and again, the density from 150 to 600 bedrooms per hectare. So the designations that apply to 635 are being carried over across the site. The zoning bylaw, 635 Herb Street is zoned multiple residence 12, which permits triplex and apartment dwellings as well as non-residential uses. A portion of the property is subject to a site-specific bylaw 04-085, which we can see on the map that's provided. That site-specific bylaw re-zones the parcel from medium-density to multiple residence. The MR12 zone permits a height of 12 stories and 36 meters. 12 West Hill Drive is zoned SR1, which permits a single detached dwelling and a height limit of 10.5 meters. The zoning bylaw amendment that is requested will rezone 12 West Hill Drive to MR12 to match the zoning on 635 Herb Street West, also to permit terrace dwellings and townhouses on the entirety of the site, and to allow a maximum building height of 40 meters and 13 stories in conformity with the official plan, whereas the MR12 zone currently limits the height at 36 meters. Another request that's being presented to council is for an exemption to a Planning Act regulation that prohibits any minor variances within a period of two years of the approval of a site-specific bylaw. This will be carried through a council resolution and will be addressed as part of the staff The concept site plan has two driveways into the property, from West Hill Drive to the west and West Haven Street to the east. Two levels of parking are provided in the center of the property. Five buildings are proposed with a total of 335 units and 499 bedrooms. Buildings A and B are 13-story apartment buildings. Those are the larger two L-shaped buildings that are shown. Building C, D, and E at the bottom of the site are stacked townhouses. The site plan committee will review the plan and issue approval in principle before the formal public meeting. This is a rendering of the proposed development. The two apartment buildings are visible along Herb Street, and the three stacked townhouse buildings are shown at the rear of the property. These units will provide a stepping of building height towards the adjacent property to the south. The applicant will speak further to the design merits of this context, concept. Several plans and reports have been submitted with the application. Copies of these documents are available on the city's website. Staff will review the following and prepare a report to be presented at a formal public meeting, which will be scheduled in the coming months. I'm now available to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you very much, John. Does any council have any questions for staff? Please remember, this is an informal public meeting, and only questions of clarification may be asked. Council members should not express opinions at this point. Counselor Whaley, first of the gate.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Voss, and in particular, this aerial view of the potential of what the site is going to look like, that's very helpful in giving it some context. If you could go back to that picture, is it possible for you to go back to that picture? It shows that there's no entrance or way in or out on Herb Street, but my question relates to Iron Needles Boulevard. Is it the same that there's no entrance or exit on Iron Needle Boulevard as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. There's no direct access from this property to.
So the only way in, then, is down West Hill Drive and to yet-to-be-constructed roadway that takes you into the two units.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to clarify, there is an access off of West Hill Drive, which is, I'll see if I can point it out here on the property, so there is an access just at the bottom side here with the roundabout on West Hill, and so vehicles will be able to exit down here onto Iron Needles Boulevard.
I see.
So that'll be the connection.
And I think you meant the cul-de-sac on West Hill rather than roundabout.
The cul-de-sac.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Freeman, please.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. One of the things that I'm hoping you might be able to show when it comes back for formal is the relationship between this, the entrances and so on, associated with the commercial area that was approved in the corner, because I'm pretty confident that there will be an odd access potential there that would take vehicles across the front of the existing structure, the tall one, that faces, I don't even know which way you'd say it faces, but the existing tall building, because once that, whatever it is, the drive-through nightmare is constructed, there'll be, I believe there's a roadway that will navigate its way through onto Herbsville, and I just think there'll be a value to better understand how the traffic flow might move through there once it's constructed. Some residents had expressed a significant concern to me via email with regard to that other. other application related to the fact that that is their emergency access alongside that building there, and does the potential exist, I guess, to clutter that access? The other questions that I would like to get some more answers on, if I could, are with regard to the parking structure. In this image, the parking structure doesn't look as out of bounds, but in the site plan view that you showed, it appeared that the parking looked really out of bounds in terms of green space versus asphalt space of the property. And this was something that was raised by the Act of Transportation Committee in terms of pedestrian movement through this property. So if we could get some more information with regard to pedestrian movement and also with regard to, I guess, cycling movements, because if I understand correctly, this is a two-story deck, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct.
Yeah, so I think it would be helpful to better understand that. And I guess I wondered, given the fact that this is a two-story deck, why there couldn't have been more, I guess, green space or something allocated on that top deck just to make it look more, I don't know, like, user-friendly? Green, I don't know. I don't know what the right word is, but it just appears to be quite asphalt versus green.
And just, are you looking for comments from Mr. Voss on that one, or just want to...
Yeah, I just want to know whether or not they can do some more work with regard to landscaping on that top deck.
Thoughts, Mr. Voss?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That will be discussed with the applicant and addressed through site plan.
Thank you. Next up, I have Councillor Durrell, Councillor Maven.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Jaworski. I'm curious, when I look at this and I see the buildings, the townhouses on C, D, and E, they're kind of just facing a field, and I'm wondering why they wouldn't be on Herb Street, because they would create sort of that people space, eyes on the street. And so then I'm wondering, it said beauty bar, there was a few things that would be eligible to be in this sort of mixed residential. And is the plan to have them facing out onto Herb Street, so to create sort of that on the streets activity?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The stacked townhouses are proposed at the south side in order to provide that stepping of height from the front of Herb Street to the back and adjacent property. And so the taller buildings are directed up at the front. And to answer the question about other types of uses that are permitted in the zoning, the applicant has not indicated that those uses would be considered, that this is an entirely residential development that's proposed.
So then, as far as zoning is concerned in this area, there's the, there'll be a restaurant right sort of between this, and then everything is across the street, and that's all retail, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Councillor Maven, next.
Can I see the picture, the illustration again? No sound barriers are anticipated?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's an acoustic report that was prepared regarding the noise of traffic on Herb Street, and no, all the mitigation measures are proposed within the building, I understand.
Okay, so that won't be an issue? You don't think, sorry, I'm not supposed to ask that, I guess. And what about, right now, the region is planning on reconstruction of Herb Street. Do their plans include a, some sort of intersection control on West Haven? Because I assume right now, there's very little traffic comes over there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The region will be providing comments on this application, and that'll likely be addressed through that process.
And traffic studies? Would the traffic studies that we saw for this area include this development, including the increased density?
And through you, Mr. Mayor. Traffic study was prepared with this application, looking at the intersection of West Haven, as well as the intersection of Ira Needles and Herb, and it was not identified that significant traffic would be generated as a result of this development.
How many units?
499 units. Again, this will be reviewed through staff's review of the proposal.
And what would this look like if the zone change was...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The property at 635 is currently zoned for 12-story apartment buildings, and that would be generally the type of use that would be permitted or proposed for actual development.
So Buildings A and B would be there, but perhaps the other units may not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct.
Is the traffic study, you say the traffic, just to be clear, was the traffic study that you referred to, is it available?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's available on the city's website, and can be available if anyone inquires through me.
Great, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Seeing none. Thank you very much, John. I will now ask any registered delegations to come forward, and first up, and the only registered delegation I have here is David Galbraith. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. My name's David Galbraith, and I'm a planner with IBI Group here on behalf of Bell Communities. I'm joined tonight by representatives from Bell Communities, as well as Tom Hardaker, who's a senior planner and the project manager on this file. Tonight, I'll give you a brief overview of the property, its context, and some highlights of the development, trying not to overlap with John too much. I will discuss some highlights of the design of the building and the required planning applications that are proposed. So the subject property is known as 635 Herb and 12 West Hill Drive, located in the city of Waterloo. The property is approximately 2 hectares in size, and it's a currently vacant lot. The site has frontage onto Herb Street, West Hill Drive, and West Haven Street, and as shown on the site plan earlier, the proposed development will have access from both West Hill Drive and West Haven. West of the site is the Boardwalk Commercial Area, as well as the Costco and the recently approved Tim Hortons site, as well as the existing apartment buildings at 7 West Hill. I have another image coming up after this that shows the range of uses in this area. The site is currently designated mixed-use medium-high-density and low-density residential. I got an error in the presentation here. It's mixed-use medium-high, not mixed-use high. And it's currently zoned multiple residence 12 and single residence 1. So this image provides an aerial view of the existing property and approximate property lines. So as you can see, I don't think I can point with this most, but the 12 West Hill Drive portion of the property is currently designated for low-density residential purposes, and it's also zoned for those purposes. As you saw in the concepts earlier, through the development plan, it's what will be located or what's proposed on this portion of the site is one block of the stacked towns, as well as the entrance from West Hill Drive into the development. And then the remainder of the site, the 635 Herb Street portion of the site, is already zoned and designated for mixed-use medium-high-density residential purposes. This image provides a contextual overview of the site and the range of uses that are already existing in the area. The blue arrows, or pins, whatever you want to call them, show existing residential uses. So immediately west of the site, you have the two existing apartment buildings, one's 11 and one's four stories. Immediately east of the site, you have a predominantly single-detached neighborhood. And then across Herb Street, you have a mix of residential uses, some row houses, some townhouses, singles and semis. The yellow arrows show the commercial uses that were noted before, your Costco, Canadian Tire Plaza, your Winners Plaza across Ira Needles. And then the purple is the aforementioned Tim Hortons. So the applicant is proposing to develop the site as a mixed apartment and townhouse development, which will feature two 13-story apartment buildings, as well as three blocks of stacked townhouses. In total, there will be 335 total residential units currently proposed, with a total of 499 bedrooms. For context and to show how this fits into the existing planning framework, I note that the current OP designation could allow for up to 858 bedrooms on the site, so the current proposal is well within the density that is permitted on the site. As you will see on the site plan, there's also a centralized parking lot with a total of 422 parking spaces, 237 of which are located underground. And there is proposed a range of amenity spaces, including outdoor amenity space and indoor amenity space, which could likely include a gym, party room, et cetera, which will be determined through the site plan process. So John has previously showed you the site plan, so I'm not going to go through this in any great detail. The next three slides show artist's renderings of the proposed development. This would be looking across Herb Street. You'd be in the middle of a townhouse block right here if you were actually on Herb Street, but this is looking south on the proposed development. This image would be your perspective looking from the base of the West Haven onto, or towards Ira Needles and Herb Street. So you can see the stacked townhouses at the back of the site. And I think what this clearly shows is that the development's really framing the parking lot, so it's not overly visible from the public realm, which I think is a key design element of this proposal. And then this image shows the massing and the artist's rendering of the building within the greater framework here. So this slide summarizes some of the perceived highlights of the design. As John had mentioned before, the proposed townhouses, which are currently permitted by the zoning bylaw and requested through the zoning bylaw amendment, will provide that transfer in density from Herb Street, where the towers will be located, to the planned low-density area south of the site. The buildings feature a range of materials, which will be refined through the site plan process, and a well-articulated facade. Again, the centralized parking is something that I think is a key design element of this proposal. And to you, Councillor Freeman, I think there is opportunity through the site plan process for some refinements of the area as a landscape plan is prepared. Along the base of the two towers, there are residential suites, which will have direct access to the street, which will serve the function of activating that street and providing more of a neighborhood feel at the base of the buildings. And then another thing, if I can scroll back to the site plan, is the separation of the utilities and the garbage areas from the rest of the site, which will provide an added benefit to the residents of the development. So as John had mentioned, in support of this development, three applications are being proposed. Firstly, an official plan amendment to basically mirror the land use designations applicable to 635 Herb Street on that 12 West Hill portion of the site. A zoning bylaw amendment's also being proposed to match the zoning of 12 West Hill Drive to the remainder of the site, making it multiple residential 12. The zoning bylaw amendment's also requesting that townhouse dwellings or stacked towns would be permitted through the, on the site. And then the applicant's also requesting site-specific relief from the height requirements of bylaw to permit a building height of 40 meters, which is permitted by the official plan. And then finally, the applicant's requesting a resolution of council to provide the ability to request a minor variance application within two years of approval by council, which would give flexibility through the site planning and development of the site for minor variances if required. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Galbraith. First out of the gate is Councillor Henry, and then Councillor Durrell and Whaley.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, David, for your presentation. I've got a few questions. I'll start with what should be an easier one on the OPA request. Can you explain, just briefly summarize in your opinion, why that's a request you need to make on the site, and why staff should look at it favorably? Certainly, OPAs are different than zoning amendments in terms of the level of detail and consideration we have to give them.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. Yeah, I guess you don't see official plan amendments as frequently as zoning bylaw amendments, but what the applicant's trying to do with this site is to develop it, the two properties as one, and through the process, it just makes it an easier process to be working within one set of rules, if you will. As shown on the concept, I think the desire of the applicant is still to provide that transition in density, so to have the lower-density uses in the back, so they're not looking to put a tower at the back, which could be permitted through the mixed-use medium-high-density designation, but just to allow for the development of the site within one policy framework.
Well, I think we do have some low-rise, adjacent step-back provisions that does limit what you can do in the back part of the site anyways, the south part of the site anyways. Okay, the second question I have, I'm wondering, and I couldn't get this myself, I'm wondering if you can give me sort of the horizontal dimension along Herb Street for Tower B. It does appear to be, you know, much longer on Tower B than Tower A, which appears to be balanced between the two parts of the L. The Tower B one appears to be much longer along Herb Street.
All right. I will see if I have that dimension with me, but you are correct, Tower B is slightly longer. I know that there's 176 units in Tower B compared to 134 in Tower A, so it is slightly I do not have that dimension with me right now. I can follow up, though.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'll tell you why I raise it. I raise it since we're before the board on another matter at a site plan level for a horizontal length of a building and a tower of approximately this height, if not a little bit higher. And so as you go through site plan, I will be curious to see commentary through John's report as it comes back into compliance with tall-building guideline portions of our urban design manual, since obviously the city's had an active interest on a similar file, and I know we try to be consistent. And the third question I have, I appreciate what you said to Councillor Freeman, and I will hope for some refinement as you go through site plan on some of the site orientation. I saw in your renderings some people walking up ramps with cars, and that's obviously less ideal than I'm sure what you'll come up with when you go into some more detail. But I would note the two-year prohibition on minor variances requiring council resolution. This is the first request that I believe we've received as a council under that provision, so I will be curious as to how we'll look at that, and if there's some narrowing on what you might be looking for, because it's a blanket exemption request that you're seeking without us knowing what that would mean. For the first go out of the gate, we may have more concern with that than we might later after we have some experience. So I make those notes, and I'll leave it to others.
Next up, Councillor Durrell and Councillor Whaley. You can come through.
Thanks. So I noticed, if you want to go back to what it currently looks like, and I'm, there we go, I'm not totally familiar with it. Okay, so it looked like there was a little forest there, but the forest, are you planning on keeping all the trees? I noticed in the renderings, there were trees right beside the house. I'm pointing, and you can totally tell when I'm pointing, I'm sure. Okay, so under 12 West Hill Drive, go underneath it, and there's that white house.
Right.
It looked like in the renderings, those trees were all being kept. Is that a fact?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. I think the artists may have taken some liberties with the artistic rendering at this point. We have not prepared a landscape plan yet, but that will be prepared through the site plan application process, but it was not required for the OPA and zone change application. I believe a vegetation management plan has been prepared already, and I don't think any of those trees on the southern portion did merit any protection. of those trees on the southern portion did merit any protection.
Okay.
But that will be subject to discussions with city staff through the site plan process.
Okay, so I'd be curious to know how many trees are there, and then how many will be there if passed and approved going forward. Also, I'm curious about who's going to live here. So is it families, seniors? What are you looking at? If it's families, there's a school close by, so there'll be kids walking, so walk me through what that would look like.
Okay, through you, Mayor Jaworski. I believe the intent of the applicant is to appeal to a very broad range of prospective buyers. Many of the stacked towns are three bedrooms, some of them are two-bedroom units, so those would be suitable for family-style residences. The apartments are one- and two-bedroom units, ranging from about seven hundred and fifty to eleven hundred square feet in size, which are fairly generous-sized units compared to, I know some units that are now being developed in Northdale for comparison, which are four hundred or so square feet. So these are large-size units, and at the back of the planning justification report, and we've also submitted floor plans or conceptual floor plans, you can look at the layouts of the units. Yeah, I'll leave it with that.
So then the second part of my question is, show me how these kids are going to walk to school or how that works, and where do they go, so it's safe for them to be able to do that?
So I think my response to that question is, we will work on these types of details through the site plan process. There are internal sidewalks through the site. It's difficult to make out, but between those two, these landscaping strips, there's actually a walkway between that through the center of the site, but these details will be refined through the site plan process, and we'll have a clear picture of movement at that time.
Thank you. I'd like to see that when it comes back for formal things.
Councilor Whaley, Vitha Maven.
Yeah, could you go back to the picture of the proposed buildings? Now, the currently aligned is zoned MR twelve, which is a twelve-story limit, and yet you asked for thirteen. You asked for two, three. Why do you go against the community standard on this?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. I think, as I'd mentioned before, the proposed development's well within what could be built in terms of units. There are some grading changes, significant grade changes on the site, which basically expose, can I point? There we go. This portion of the site here is much lower than up at Herb Street. The site drops off quite significantly. I think it's in the range of ten to twelve meters from one portion to the next. So in accordance with the city's bylaw, this part of the building, it would be exposed and considered as a story, because it would be within the definition of how the city measures height. So that's largely the reason for why that height change is being requested.
According to the picture here, it looks like a pretty well-established plan that you have in your mind and what you want to build, and yet you ask for two years of variance wiggle room to fiddle with the plan. It tells me that the solid plan on paper still has a lot of question marks in your own mind. So give me a couple of examples, if you could, of what potential variances you might ask for that council's going to give you a blank check for.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. I believe one important thing that I don't think I mentioned previously is that this site will likely be developed as multiple condominiums, and due to that, that could trigger setbacks that wouldn't exist if the site was developed in its whole. So let's say one condominium was developed, which would include the eastern portion of the site. That, depending on the lines, that would be typically, the condominium process occurs after the site plan approvals. We could, there could be some setback issues that could be, could come about as a result of that process that would need to be captured through a minor variance. And currently, as a result of the Planning Act changes, the ability to apply for minor variance, when a site-specific zoning bylaw amendment has been applied for and approved by council, there's a two-year prohibition. So that would just provide the flexibility for those types of issues. I hope that addresses your comment.
Somewhat, and I'm looking forward to have staff really go deep into this. It's the first time we've had such a request for a two-year wiggle room, and I really want to make sure we get that right. I do want to comment on the urban design, and I'll figure out a way to make a question out of it. You know, with the abundance of apartments, you know, on the market these days, the development community has decided that they're going to up their game and put better products on the market in terms of visual, exterior visual, and I think that's a good thing. The community's ready to embrace better architecture, and I think, you know, you achieved that in this particular instance. Wouldn't you agree?
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I will pass those comments back to our architectural team. They will appreciate that, for sure.
Excellent question, Councilor Whaley.
Thank you.
Councilor Vitha and Councilor Maven.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, or Mayor Jaworski. My first question was about the vegetation, which Councilor Durrell already brought up. Just wondering if, you know, those, will there be a study or will you look at them to see if they're significant, because that's kind of happened in my neighborhood recently. And my second question is, and I've got my Google map in front of me, how, I just want to know that the citizens that live to the south and to the west of that, in the West Hill neighborhood there, that the notification has gone out far enough that people that live close by, and maybe not as close, know about this before it gets to the next step? So can you, like, do you know, would it have gone out as far as, like, Stone Path Court, Birch Leaf Walk, or maybe staff can answer those questions? Like, what's the boundary for notification?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Vitha. The Planning Act requires a hundred and twenty-meter radius around the property, and so that picks up a number of the houses directly to the east, some of the properties to the north, especially the townhouse developments, and also the notice was published in the newspaper, which circulated citywide and available on the city's website.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Councilor Maven, please.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. Keeping with the same picture or same slide, have you given any thoughts to what's going to happen at West Hill in Iron Needles? Is there a plan someplace along the lines for a roundabout?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. I would, I don't believe a roundabout is contemplated by the region at this time, but we will have to confirm with their comments. I don't recall, though.
Okay, my last discussion with the region, just for your information, I'm just passing information, was there'd be a roundabout there as long as somebody can pay for it. So that was the comment I got back, and I wasn't willing to, so. Just, this may be a question for staff rather than yourself, but the properties that are south, directly south, this was zoned SR one for a reason, and I'm wondering what the zoning is on the property directly south of this, the ones that appear in nice golf course green?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The property that's golf course green is SR one zoning, same as what twelve West Hill currently is.
So this SR one that currently exists, in part of the discussion here, sort of merges with that SR one, is that the idea? Just trying to understand.
Sorry, I don't follow the question at this point.
Okay, you've got, I like what the developers have presented. It's a nice square, and that makes sense to me, but then there's this little corner on the side that's merged, and it seems to be zoned more to fit in with the southern properties than the northern property.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe twelve West Hill and the adjacent properties fronting onto West Hill Drive were all zoned similarly, so that the frontage on West Hill would have similar zoning. However, functionally, this property seems to fit more within the context of the six thirty-five property dimensions.
Okay, so when that West Haven comes through, it's not going to be for the SR one, it's not going to be any SR ones fronting onto West Haven?
West Haven, no. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, the property where West Haven will extend through is zoned SR one, and that would be the zoning that would apply for development on fronting onto West Haven.
Yeah, I'm a little confused here, John, but it's probably more my problem than yours. Okay, thank you.
So you just clarified some things, Vitha, so thank you very much for asking those questions. I don't think we have any further questions from Mr. Galbraith, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here present tonight who wishes to speak to this application? Please, come on up. You'll have five minutes, I think, is it five or three? Five. Welcome, you'll have five minutes. Please state your name and municipality for the record, please.
Natty Mazurlo Waterloo. I'm a Westcroft Drive resident.
Okay.
Just moved there in March, sorry, a little emotional.
Welcome to the city.
Normally, normally, I'm really good at public speaking. I've been up, sorry, this is really embarrassing.
Enjoy, have a glass of water, we have water here for you.
I've spoken with a few residents on our street. Some did not get a notice at the corner of our street, where even you could walk out of their house and see the apartment buildings, they didn't get a letter about tonight. So there's not enough notification. Our neighbors here, too, who just bought a home, we're in the shadow of these parks.
No, it's okay, take your time, take your time. One thing, while you're, maybe grab some water there. What we're doing here is, in the city of Waterloo, is we actually have the concept of an informal public meeting, so it's an early opportunity for residents to get an overview of what's going on in their neighborhood, and that's really all that's happening tonight, is an early overview for residents and for us to hear what's going on.
Which is why I should not be emotional yet. However, I'm an artist, so that probably comes out now. So try to make some jokes to help this out a little, stop being emotional. I understand the need for the city to grow, to expand homes available for residents. I think we would all like to know how this is going to impact our families on Westcroft Drive and behind, because traffic, we don't have lights there, so there isn't the infrastructure for that. Like, why is there not a playground anywhere there? Like, it's clearly a field where my other neighbor across the street's children run around. So all of us on that street are single-family dwellings who have young families, a lot of new babies. We bought there, hoping to raise our kids in that neighborhood, and I waited seven years to buy in that neighborhood, so it's very close to my heart, this issue. So there's many things that are not being addressed properly, even today, even though it is an informal meeting. So I just look forward to all the future meetings where all of the issues can be really brought to the forefront. I don't like the graphics being drawn, because those buildings are taller than the building behind. Nothing today was spoken about the shadow study and how the looming shadow of the apartment buildings affects the residents on my street. Why can't we just have beautiful stacked townhome condominium with a park in the middle for kids? I mean, that would be lovely. I realize it's less money, but we all have a vested interest in our community, so we hope you can take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a moment, please. Maybe, John, you can speak to somehow how residents can get further information, how they can go to the website and get further information to the city and to Mr. Galbraith.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As the planner representing the file and reviewing it, I'm definitely available for any email or phone call conversations, or even a meeting, potentially even onsite. All the plans that were submitted with the application are fully on the website, so I encourage you to look through, especially the shadow study is available there. Lots of information, so I'll be glad to help with that.
Thank you. Oh, also, parking. We're going to have our whole streets covered in cars coming and going, and our kids play, and, you know, it just, it's a big thing to ask. I actually didn't realize, I found it shocking that it was even being considered on that lot. It is currently zoned, single-family. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the important thing to know is that the vast majority of land has, how long would that have been zoned for twelve-story, John? Any thoughts? Or Cam, I better look to Cam for something like this.
Excuse me, through, to Mayor Jaworski. Since our nodes and corridors study, which would be a decade ago or so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any further people wish to speak tonight? Seeing somebody coming up, so put them, go on up. Please state your name and municipality for the record, please.
My name's Michael Tweed. I'm the executor for the estate of Doreen Tweed, the property owner of twenty-eight West Hill Drive, which is the large lot adjacent on the south side that you've been asking about. This is all because this is first I've seen the actual plan or anything, so I just have two basic things that I didn't see really addressed, and one deals with what the gentleman here said. So my main concern, which wasn't addressed at all, although you did mention the topography, has a large drop both east-west and north-south, and you're talking about a large, basically concrete pad for a parking lot with a underground parking below it. So the fact that there's already, obviously, storm drainage would be a major concern, because you're losing all of that absorption into the soil there. So I haven't seen any mention or anything indicated in anything that's presented today to indicate how that would be addressed, because obviously, that's going to majorly affect our property and the storm. The drainage pond that exists now, the catch pond, is to the southeast of our property. So that's one major concern I have. The fill, of course, and everything, again, because it's a major drop, like, it's a much further drop on the north-south into our property than it is the east-west along Herb Street. So again, there's just a small retaining wall that was indicated here. So again, I have concerns about all of these sort of environmental factors and how it would affect our property. So that's one major, which, you know, you can see, I think there's probably other things to deal with, and I'm not an expert on this, and I'm just winging it. And the other issue is just a minor thing that this gentleman here referred to, and that's that the entrance and exit for West Hill Drive going onto Iron Needles is a right turn only, coming from both directions, and you already have, it's my understanding, it's the second busiest roundabout in the province or so. I'm not exactly sure what the thing is, but it's a very busy roundabout. It's pure hell, the way it is, and now you're saying you want to add all these other people turning and coming in and out and only being able to spin around that way. Coming out onto Herb Street off of West Vale, you'd be looking at all the people that would really only be able to turn right onto Herb Street, so you're forcing them to go out onto Iron Needles and running around that whole roundabout to get anywhere west or even north to go down Herbsville Road. So again, traffic circulation there, obviously, being a nightmare, and as the lady here mentioned, that's also going to then force people at the cul-de-sac at the end to cut through. My father lives actually in seven West Hill, in the Sifton Building there, and that's going to, and they've already indicated to me concerns about the Tim Hortons on the corner creating traffic problems, that people are going to realize they can cut through down West Hill and then cut out through these various ways. So you're going to have a major increase in traffic flow due to these two factors, plus the way people can't turn in all these, at all these entrance and exits to these side streets. So those are just two major things that haven't been at all addressed adequately in this presentation, anyway, that I'd be major, would like to see and hear, and I would need then to see these things, of course, and... And I would need then to see these things, of course, and see counsel with advisors on my end for the impact of these things and what we plan on doing with the property, as my mother just passed away. So it's a new thing for me to figure out, you know, make these sorts of decisions, and this is major impact to that. Again, it's basically a two-hectare, a five-acre property, so.
Well spoken. And I think the one thing to note is the roads, both roads are regional roads, not west of, of course, but Herb and Iron Needles and Herbsville. So I think John mentioned that we'll be getting input from the region on that. And then regarding stormwater management, John, when does that, how does that take place in all the surrounding properties, the impacts of that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The storm drainage has been proposed through a concept servicing plan that was provided. Will be addressed later through site plan, the really fine details of the engineering. But the current concept has drains with a portion of the property going to the existing stormwater pond, and then the rest going towards the west on West Hill Drive. So it'll be collected into the municipal storm sewer system primarily, is the proposal that's being reviewed again through staff.
Yeah. So thank you. Do questions of the delegate? Seeing none. I think the key thing is to get further thoughts as you have a chance to review the material, being adjacent property owner. Certainly send in the commentary to Mr. Ross, that we can collect it all and respond appropriately. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And seeing no further delegates. After no more delegations, this informal public meeting is now concluded, and staff will review the issues and provide further reporting to council at a later date. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next up, there's regional information and correspondence. Under new business, delegations, staff reports. Mr., whose is it? Shanes has a report here for us on fire routes, regulating parking within fire routes within the city of Waterloo. Mr. Turner, are you speaking to this or just questions from council? Questions from council on the fire routes? Seeing none. Moved by Counselor Whaley, seconded by Counselor Freeman. All those in favor? That's all of us. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Other business from council? Counselor Durrell?
I just wanted to point out St. Patrick's Day is coming up, and--
Why are you doing this?
It comes every year, and that staff and police and me will all be meeting with the Albert McGregor Neighborhood Association on Wednesday. So I just wanted to thank staff for the time that they're putting in to prepare for this meeting. And then I was also thinking it would be beneficial to perhaps either do a briefing note or come to council to talk about what we're doing for St. Patrick's Day. It's always a moving target, and so I was just thinking, perhaps, Mr. Anderson, it might be appropriate to have someone come to council and brief us on what's happening this year.
Yeah, there is some number of changes this year, but is it, to Mr. Anderson, what would be the appropriate timing of that? You know, we're going to be doing some community engagement over the coming two weeks.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Durrell. It's a very good suggestion. I think we can come forward in the past. I believe we provided a briefing note, but I think we can provide a little more robust update to council. The program is changing a little bit. There is a lot of background work going on right now with Mr. Turner, Mr. Dykstra, and many of our external partners on the operations front, and some changes, as the mayor noted. So we'll certainly do that.
Other items of interest to council? Seeing none. We have a bunch of bylaws, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We want to move some bylaws. Counselor Durrell does, Counselor Freeman does. All those in favor? That's all of us. Somebody want to adjourn? Counselor Whaley and Vith do. All those in favor? That's all of us. Thank you.